At the Village of Pales Park Council Meeting for Monday, April 28, 2025. Would the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan?
Here.
Commissioner Wade?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Present.
Commissioner Hope?
Yep.
Mayor Milovich Walters?
Present. Let them all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting on April 14, 2025. If there are no corrections or changes, I seek a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion in second, Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yep.
Mayor Milovich Walters?
Yes. Moving on to recommendations, proclamation, appointments, and presentations. The first one is to proclaim May 2025 Building Safety Month with this year's theme, Game On. And the second one is to proclaim May 18 through the 24th of 2025 Public Works Week with this year's theme, People, Purpose, Presence. All right, moving on to hearings, I'm going to hand this off to Commissioner Reed. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion in second, Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Milovich Walters?
Yes. Now for you, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. It's that time once again for us to discuss the annual budget. To consider the proposed budget ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2025, and ending April 30, 2026 in the amount of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars, excuse me, fourteen million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. I'll wake up before I'm done. Some of the highlights of the budget as set forth in the packet that you have before you. Number one, the budget is balanced. Number two, the general fund sewer and water fund ending fund balance for fiscal year 2026 is projected to be above the fund balance reserve of 25%. The budget includes the following capital purchases under the general fund. Two patrol vehicles at one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, body worn camera software and storage fees at twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars, the fitness court sanding and refurbishing of the gym floor at twenty thousand dollars, the 1% table sales tax fund, area wide paving at one million, sixty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, roadside bowling tractor at sixty thousand dollars, and a pre-let system for truck number one and number 69 totaling twenty-three thousand dollars. With respect to the sewer fund, there were meet--
Omega.
Thank you. Omega lift station upgrade at one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, skyet control upgraded twenty-five thousand dollars, and replace vehicle number 52, which is a pickup truck, at seventy-five thousand dollars. With respect to the water main lowering at 223rd Street at six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, the pump station upgrade, depending on the grant that we have pursued, approximately five hundred thousand dollars. These are simply some of the highlights that the village will be pursuing with respect to the funds for the budget for 2020, 25, and 2026. I'm not going to belabor the point anymore. To the extent that there are any questions on either these items or any of the other line items set forth in the budget, we'd be more than happy to take any type of questions to the sponsor of this meeting.
If anybody from the audience would like to ask a question or ask for any clarification, we're happy to address that at this time. Seeing no takers, I'll hand it back to you. Do you-- does anybody on the council have any questions?
I think--
Close carry.
Yeah, I was just--
Close carry.
Well, I was just asking, now, I guess. Okay. Now, now I'll ask for the motion to close the public hearing since nobody else wants to talk.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion in second, Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Milovich Walters?
Yes. I don't know. It, it, sometimes. Well, we will come back to this and vote on this later in the agenda. So now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is decided, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, to approve a Village of Pales Park temporary liquor license to Durbin Pizza for the Pales Park Doggy Dash 5K One Mile Fund Run and Walk to take place on Saturday, May 17, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Item B, to approve payment of invoices on the warrant list date of April 28, 2025 in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. Item C, to pass Resolution 2025 R03, a resolution to adopt the Cook County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. The resolution states that the village accepts the 2024 Cook County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and will continue to participate in updating and revising the 2024 plan with another plan review and revision occurring within a five-year cycle. Item D, to adopt Ordinance 2025-09, an ordinance approving an increase in the Village of Pales Park's non-home rural municipal retailers' occupation tax and non-home rural municipal service occupation tax and amending Part 8, Title 4, Chapter 885, Section 885.01 and Chapter 886, Section 886.01 of the Pales Park Village Code with regard to the same. The ordinance states that it is necessary and in the best interest of the residents of the village that the village approve and adopt a non-home rural municipal retailer's occupation tax under Section 8-11-1.3 of the code and a non-home rural municipal service occupation tax under Section 8-11-1.4 of the code and to increase such Section 8-11-1.3 and 8-11-1.4 taxes to maximum statutory tax rate of 1%. That was a lot. Item E, to approve Ordinance 2025-10, an ordinance repealing Part 4, Title 6, Chapter 462 of the Pales Park Village Code with the regard to motor vehicle licensing. The ordinance states that Part 4, Title 6, Chapter 462 of the Pales Park Village Code repealed and deleted in its entirety. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion in second, Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Sorry.
What did I do?
Commissioner Reed, what did I do? Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes again.
Mayor Milovich Walters?
Yes. All right, moving on. There are no items of old business on the agenda, nor are there any board commissioning committee recommendations. So we'll move on to information and updates, public works and streets, and recreational report. Commissioner Patan?
Thank you, Mayor. Just see, there's nothing on the agenda for your approval this evening, so I just have a couple announcements. We started our public works, starting their chipper, village chipper this week. So check our website for those dates and what you need to do for that. The chipper will start on the west side of the village and continue east until all the debris is picked up. Also, I want to remind everyone about the summer programming in recreation. It is now online. The brochure you can pick up at the Recreation Department or go online and take a look at all the wonderful activities we have scheduled for the kids and adults and seniors. Let's see, May 4th, which is this Sunday at the center, at the lodge, is our programming called Fungus Among Us. So please come and join us for that. That starts at noon this Sunday at the center. And then as far as, uh, May, let's see, May 17th is the third annual Doggy Dash. It's that 5K One Mile Run Walk with, without your pet. So please sign up certainly by this Thursday if you want even T-shirts, because T-shirt orders will be put in. So if you're not signed up by Thursday, you might lose out on the size of the T-shirt you would like. And then finally, I just want to say a thank you to many volunteers that came out Saturday, two days ago, for our Red Litter Day. It was the 28th annual. We've been doing this for 20 years, which I did not even know that. I've been in the village since '91. I didn't realize it was that long. But thanks to the rec staff for coming out. We had an enormous amount of members from the Islamic Center come out. Our Boy Scouts were out, residents, high schoolers. So yeah, I really appreciate all the work coming out and picking up a ton of garbage that accumulates over the winter. And then a special shout out to Denise Cowan. She was, she's been running this program and she comes out with her map, gets the volunteers, has all the supplies, and makes sure that she knows where to be going, where most of the litter accumulates. And she sends out her volunteers. And then thanks for the public works and rec center for going around and picking up those orange bags that you might see on the side of the road. But thank you for a very successful Red Litter Day. And that concludes my report.
Wow, Commissioner Patan, thank you so much. It really was a beautiful day on Saturday and there were so many people. And what was it, like 50 bags of garbage picked up? That truck bed was full.
No.
It was disgusting, but very happy that it was all picked up. So yes, thank you to all the volunteers. And you don't have to only do it that one or two days a year that we have Red Litter Day. You can do it every day that you're walking, pick up the trash that you see. Moving on to the building and public property report, that would be you. So why am I looking at--
Mr. Wade?
Mr. Wade? I wanted to say the--
Uh, I'm pleased, Mayor. Uh, if you have landscapers to work on your house this spring and summer, please remember that they need to be registered with the Village of Pales Park. Two-page contractor registration forms to be filled out, certificate of insurance submitted, as well as registration fee paid. Thank you for registering to work in the village. If you need assistance with the contractor registration process, call us at 708-671-3753. And also to the residents, if you notice any work being done outside of work hours, feel free to call that number as well. In the permit department, the building department processed 20 permits from April 9th to April 23, totaling twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and 25 cents as we come near the end of the fiscal year. Brings our total to two hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and 91 cents. And that concludes my report.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Wade. Moving on to public health and safety report, that would be you, Commissioner Hope.
Fair enough, it would be. So we'll start with the police activity report from the 14th of April through the 27th of April, 01/25. 2084 service calls, additional 25 citizen assist calls, road 18K reports. Unfortunately, there were eight accident reports, but fortunately, no juvenile offenders or adults were arrested, and we didn't count any vehicles. In 98 traffic stops, 19 moving violations, 11 communication tickets, and 81 speeding tickets. So that is what the Pales Park Police Department's been up to for the last two weeks. Have a couple of quick announcements. It's that time of the year again. So beginning May 1st, we've been giving out bike helmets to local children as part of the National Children and Safety Program. So we hand these free bicycle safety helmets to kids in Pales Park, and they're being distributed as part of a national program. If you're interested, give us a holler, or you can come to the Pales Park Police Department during normal business hours on the 2nd of Friday, and we'll be happy to issue one or two, or three, if you've got three kids. And we'd ask everybody to encourage your children to wear helmets and to start the helmet wearing habit early. So again, one of the most common traumatic head injuries in, you see, the summer months is due to the fact that someone's riding a bike without a helmet. Then a couple other quick points. The Pales Park Police is gearing up to participate in the 2025 Cop on Top. This is a program that exiles police officers to the roof of the Dunkin' Donuts on La Grange as part of benefit for Special Olympics. And we participated in this, well, as long as I can remember. And there'll be goodies handed out, and Dunkin' usually gives a few goodies as well. So this is again Friday, May 16th. And it says the Dunkin' Donuts at 13029 South La Grange Road. So on the east side of La Grange, on the north side of 133rd. And--
And they're going to be there from like 5 to noon, right?
They're there, they're there from very early in the morning until about midday.
Yes, so if you want to catch them while they're there, get up early.
Fair enough. Chief Bill, anything you'd here to add?
Nothing, Commissioner.
Thank you for your service, sir. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hope. Commissioner Reed, you've got some items on the agenda tonight.
I do have a couple, thank you, Mayor. First up is to consider Ordinance 2025-08, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year ending April 30, 2026. For the Village of Pales Park, Cook County, Illinois, the ordinance states that the village is adopting a proposed budget for fiscal year 2026 in the amount of fourteen million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand-- fourteen million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Tonight, we hold the public hearing regarding the proposed budget. Illinois state statute requires the village council adopt a budget prior to the beginning of the fiscal year to which it applies. In light of everything you've heard this evening, I would ask prior to making the motion, if any of the members on the dais would like to offer a comment or comments relative to the proposed annual budget.
I'd just like to thank all the department heads for working so hard to make sure we have a balanced budget, but also the necessary surplus. And so thank you to you and your team as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to add, before I make the motion, my thanks to Finance Director of the department heads for all the diligent work that they've put in to make this budget balanced and meeting our target goal of 120 jobs. Now, I would make a motion for the adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2026. I would take the second.
So moved. Second. Sorry.
Hearing a motion in second, Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Thank you. I also have two additional items. I'm going, I'm going to take them individually. However, the comments I'm going to make are applicable to both. These are comments are directed toward my fellow council members. Typically, we don't bring men like this to you for your approval. It goes to the village manager and he blesses them. What we are looking for now in light of these trying times is financial predictability. And in order to try and get that predictability, we are proposing that we enter into multi-year agreements for certain matters. There is a cost savings involved, as yet to be determined, but I think everyone would agree that most companies will give you some type of discount if you would seek a multi-year agreement versus a annual agreement. Those comments are applicable to both. Now, the first step for your consideration is to approve a three-year proposal of Lotterback and Amen LLP for preparation of a police pension GASB Government Accounting Standards Board 67/68 actuarial evaluation and GASB 74/75 actuarial evaluation for the fiscal years ending April 30, 2025 through April 30, 2027. Background, the Government Accounting Standards Board, GASB issued standard 74/75 in order to deal with how state and local governments account for and report other post-employment benefits, the acronym OPEB. GASB issued standard 67/68 to affect how local governments report pension obligations. Both actuarial evaluations are a requirement for the municipal audit. Lotterback and Amen have submitted a three-year-- excuse me, Lotterback and Amen has submitted a three-year proposal for these services covering fiscal years ending April 30, 2025, through April 30, 2027. The fees for those services are as set forth in the documents before you. I would note that a full GASB 74/75 actuarial evaluation is required every other year, in fiscal years 2025 and fiscal year 2027. That year, 2026, is not required to have a full evaluation. Lotterback and Amen will prepare financial statement entries based on a limited actuarial report. The village has been using Lotterback and Amen LLP for these actuarials since 2015, and staff's been satisfied with the quality of services provided herein. Staff recommends that the council approve for your proposal of Lotterback and Amen LLP to provide GASB 67/68 and GASB 74/75 actuarial evaluations for the village for the fiscal years ending April 30, 2025, through April 30, 2027. Prior to making motion, I would seek any comments that anyone may have. Hearing none, I move to approve the three-year proposal with Lotterback and Amen LLP to provide the GASB 67/68 and GASB 74/75 actuarial evaluations for the village for the fiscal years ending April 30, 2025, through April 30, 2027, and would seek a second.
Second.
Hearing a motion in second, Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yep.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Milovich Walters?
Yes.
And the final matter I have for your consideration is to approve a two-year proposal with the MWM Consulting Group for actuarial consulting services for the Village of Pales Park's Police Pension Fund for the fiscal years beginning May 1, 2025, and May 1, 2026. As far as background, the village is required to have an actuarial evaluation prepared for the police pension fund each year. The actuarial evaluation report provides the village with the statutory minimum contribution required each year. This amount is calculated based on various actuarial assumptions and fund requirements mandated by state statute. It ensures the pension fund remains solvent and capable of meeting its future benefit obligation. MWM Consulting Group has submitted a two-year cost proposal for actuarial services covering fiscal years beginning May 1, 2025, and May 1, 2026. The proposed fees are as set forth in the documents before you. For comparison purposes, the village paid $3,300 for the most recent actuarial evaluation. MWM Consulting Group has provided the actuarial evaluation for the Village of Pales Park's Police Pension Fund-- excuse me, the Village of Pales Park's Police Pension Fund for the last two years. Village staff has been satisfied with the quality of the services received. Staff recommends the council approve the two-year proposal with MWM Consulting Group to provide actuarial consulting services for the Village of Pales Park's Police Pension Fund for the fiscal years beginning May 1, 2025, and May 1, 2026 respectively, and would seek any comments before making that motion.
I just think this is important so that we can be fiscally responsible and make sure that we are prepared to meet our obligations. So, thank you.
Given no further comments, I move to approve the two-year proposal with MWM Consulting Group for actuarial evaluation services for the Village of Pales Park's Police Pension Fund for the fiscal years beginning May 1, 2025, and May 1, 2026 respectively, and would seek a second.
Second.
Hearing a motion in second, Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yep.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Milovich Walters?
Yes.
I'll end my comments by not preaching, but simply making a statement. The village has limited funds and we have to make the best out of the funds that we do have. And we have to sometimes think outside of the box. And the multi-year proposal, okay, it's not radical thinking, but it's a step in the right direction with the Village's services we're about to accomplish. Adam Fines, Director, do you have any comments?
He said it all.
Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Moving on to the mayor's report, I actually have one item on the agenda today. It's the approval of a business retention economic incentive agreement for Francesca's Vicenato Restaurant renovation in the Village of Pales Park. By way of background, Francesca Vicenato opened at its present location at 12960 South La Grange Road, Pales Park, in 2003. The owners of Francesca Vicenato were in discussions with Edwards Realty to relocate the restaurant to Orland Park in what is commonly known as the Metro Triangle at approximately 14200 La Grange Road. According to the owner, Edwards Realty was offering incentives for this relocation to a space in a new entertainment district in Orland Park. Upon learning of this attempt to lure this restaurant out of Pales Park, I asked for a meeting with the owners of Francesca's last year. And based on that and subsequent meetings, the village drafted a business retention economic incentive agreement which would keep a remodeled Francesca's Vicenato in Pales Park for the foreseeable future. Through this agreement, Francesca's owner commits to a renovation of the restaurant premises, including dining rooms, bar, bathroom, kitchen, and it's estimated to cost around $450,000. Remain in Pales Park as one of its top sales and places of eating taxes, generating businesses, retain and grow employment in the village. The owner further commits to keeping the restaurant, Pales Park, for a minimum of five years or repaying the monies provided by the village plus a 5% interest. The renovation project would not be economically feasible but for the financial assistance promised by the village in this agreement. The village will make economic incentive payments to the owner of up to $100,000, subject to the terms and conditions of the agreement. The village currently receives approximately $100,000 a year from Francesca Vicenato in the form of sales and places of eating taxes. Additionally, I want to comment that with this renovation, and it's been tested at another location of theirs, by doing this, they tend to make the tables turn one extra time on busy nights, thus increasing potentially the amount of sales tax and places of eating tax that we would receive from the restaurant. And having been here for as long as it has and knowing that the residents really enjoy going to the Pales Park Francesca's, we felt it was in the best interest to get them to stay. Does anybody on the council have any comments or questions?
So how would the $100,000 pass to them?
Signing of this agreement, 50% will be passed to them. They are at least three-quarters of the way done through their renovation as it is now. And then based on-- And then, based on completion of, let's see, and then another month will be $25,000. And then the last is once they get signed off from all the lien holders who potentially have liens from the construction project, that they get, we get letters showing that they've been paid in full.
So, $50,000 now, $25,000 another month, and...
Then $25,000...
Five of $25,000?
Whenever they finally get all the signatures in.
And they're still paying their places of eating tax, if they...
Yes, they are. And they did not close, they stayed open during the renovation so that they would continue to generate business.
Fair enough. I just wanted to make sure that people understood that part of the model.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Well, I'd entertain a motion if somebody would so like to make it, since I can't.
I move to approve the business retention economic incentive agreement for Francesca's Visonado Restaurant renovation in the village of Paylos Park.
I'll second.
Hearing a motion, second. Deputy clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Patan.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Mayor Milic Walters.
Yes, and thank you for doing this. I'm glad we get to keep Francesca's in town.
It's essentially along for five years, if they leave and they pay back.
Right.
Exactly, and...
By that time, we would have made $5,000 of money.
And if, if everything goes the way it did in their Carol Stream version of this renovation, we should probably see an extra $25,000 to $30,000 in tax revenue increase from what we get now. So, potentially, that could really turn the tables.
Thank you for the clip and the version that was just transpired. It's kind of real good, and pretty much like...
Well, I had to give all the details. So sorry. All right, moving on to the clerk's report. Deputy clerk, do you have anything?
I do not, Mary. Thank you.
All right, Dan Javane, you're up, and I see you have something for us.
I do. This is a matter that's been continued from time to time since April, March. Its replacement on the village is building roofs and gutters through affordable restoration. This is accompanying the village had previously interviewed along with a number of other companies to do roofs. The village hall, the caper center roof was scheduled to be replaced last year. And we had $165,000 in our budget. We asked and got confirmation through the contractor and through Irma, our insurance pool, that our roofs, this one, including all the other village roofs, were subject to pale damage and could be replaced through our insurance program. Delay in the past few meetings has been to make certain that the prevailing wage is paid, as we're required to pay. Irma has confirmed it. Irma has worked, has worked with this contractor, so everything is set. Irma has given us, Irma being our intergovernmental risk management agency, they have provided the village with an initial check in the amount of $196,270.98. There's likelihood that additional monies will be needed to pay for roof decking, facial replacement and other damage as is uncovered through the construction process. Our village's deductible through Irma is $25,000. Irma is considering this a single claim for all roofs, and roofs include the village hall, caper center, recreation center, our pump station, the metro station, and the sleuth's house. There's a portion of public works garage that's also will be under this contract. So, what is recommended is that the council approve affordable restoration group as its contractor and have the monies that have been approved by Irma to do the work paid to the contractors who can order materials. And further recommended, council approval. The village is using its Irma reserve monies to pay the $25,000 deductible.
Does anybody have any questions regarding this? And if not, would somebody make a motion?
I move to approve foregoing the formal bidding process in retaining the affordable restoration group incorporated for Illinois as the contractor to replace the roofs and gutters at the caper center, recreation center, pump station, metro station, sleuth house, and a portion of the public works garage, and pay said company monies approved by Irma for these projects, including the initial sum of $196,270.98, and to use the village's reserved at Irma to pay the $25,000 deductible.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion, second. Deputy clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Mayor Milic Walters.
Yes. Mayor Javane, anything else?
No, we have all taken it.
Okay. Announcements. Well, I'm just going to remind everyone one more time. Arbor Day, this Sunday at the center at noon, join us for fungus among us. And then, register by this Thursday to guarantee your T-shirt for the Doggy Dash, the third annual Doggy Dash on May 17. You can bring your dog, your chicken, or your cat, but you don't have to. Feel free, you can even bring your goat, Commissioner Wade. Maybe that'd be okay.
All right. It's good for goats.
Um, no, no goats in this, okay. Well, make sure you sign up for that. It's on May 17. But go online and sign up by this Thursday to guarantee your T-shirt. And one other announcement. At the next village council meeting, I'll be doing the second State of the Village address. I'd like to invite all residents to join us for an update on what's been happening in our village and what's on the horizon. This is a great chance to hear about our progress and learn about what's coming up. Also, I know a lot of people are curious. 131st Street at Southwest Highway is scheduled to open mid-May. That's what they, we've been told by the Illinois Department of Transportation. The project here on McCarthy Road will not start until 131st has reopened. They will not close 123rd until that time. That is what they have told us at this time. If any new information comes up, I will be posting it, and it'll go out on E-News so that you can be up to date. Citizens and visitor comment period. Would anybody like to address the council this evening? Come on up, Mary Ann.
Mary Ann Hanson at 12512 South 97th Avenue. I want to thank the regional for covering the information that spreads for all the residents to see for those that don't use a computer or have time to. So, thank you to the regional. Secondly, today, we have three ordinances. You can send agendas that I think should be defined. For those that are watching the TV, for those that want to see what's actually defined going on here, because at one point, especially with two ordinances involved. Of the non-home rule municipal retailers occupation tax. Hopefully, our businesses are informed of this and they don't decide to move out because of this tax, which I assume is a tax increase for the businesses. To me, that would be a concern that they should be notified in advance. And if you did, I have no clue. The second number key on here is, or is repealing Part 4 of the village code regarding a motor vehicle license. Through the regional, I discovered that you're no longer going to use stickers for cars that we have had at least back in the 1960s. So, I did little calculations, not the theory I gave, but it seems relatively good. In the census of 2020, according to the statistics on Google, we get 2,023 housing units. And with that, based on our price, we would have an income of $121,380, which by canceling these stickers that we've been used to, which is another story, you're losing that money, which you could use for purchases or payments or whatever, or incentives for our businesses. Secondly, in that article, through your statement, Mrs. Mayor, we were down $75,375 per year because people are not getting a sticker. Well, based on that, from $75,375 to $121,000, I've calculated that based on one car per resident for 2023 housing units. Now, there's seniors that are driving, but the amount is very minimal, I'm sure. So, what's happening in this case, people are not, one, filling out the applications that are sent out to the homes. Two, you have new residents here since we have the annexation that need to be explained to them that this is what you do and what you do with the funds. And three, we need, which would fall perhaps on the shoulders of our police cadets or chief to have a campaign door-to-door through the US mail that highlights, this is what we need, this is the deadline, this is your cost, which is on another sheet, $60 for vehicles, $60. And then add two, or whatever that is. Oh, here it is. $60 for car, $45 for antique cars. I got old things, so I don't care for $45 or $60 sitting in the garage. $35 for motorcycles. There's not a lot around here while they're there, if they're on the street. And $70 for the RV plates. This should be shown to the residents here and the new ones, so they know what the charge is. If they have two, two vehicles, fine, and then six and six is 12, that's $120,000, not $100. I have three. One happens to be a truck, so I can get out of the garage in the winter time. So, I paid that amount. I know that, that's my expectations, and I would accept that. You do have a list of all the people that pay, so those that don't pay would be identified in the residence here through a computer. That would be a tax. But my overall concern is the money lost, such as the $121,000. In addition, Google, or could have been the regional, let me see, that the governor of state says he's no longer going to have a 1% tax on groceries, which is great. But he's offering it to, he said, according to Article 50 municipalities, and they in turn could receive that money, that 1%. So, it turns out, I, it's not the regional, yes, it is, the regional did a study. And that would be equivalent to 400, say, 420, yeah, $401,980. So, if we receive that, plus we already received $200,000, that's $600,000 or your benefit, the village and running the village, paying bills, et cetera. I think it's significant. That that should be written up once again for the regional and any, and any other division, that newspaper, fresh release, whatever, would take. So, people understand the necessity for this. And so, I think it's important. In addition, based on the parking at the train station, which I have had the opportunity to give the copy of it, based on the current cost, for 550 spaces, because I added up, currently, it would be $19,275. With the increase of $1.25, which would make it $1.50, your increase would be up to $143,000, which is substantial and good to maintain that parking lot. In addition, the 550 would be the total of each of those kiosks, I calculated the numbers. But realistically, they're not full, by the way. So, you figure 75% probably are, five days a week, starting at, say, 5:00 in the morning until whenever they come home in the afternoon. That would be equivalent to 275 parking spaces per day. And you multiply that times five per week, times 52 weeks, and I came up with $107,000. However, as it is, that would be in a $1.50. As it currently is, it brings in $89,180. So, that's a substantial positive increase to take care of our wonderful metro station, which we really need. I mean, it's a gift. It really is. So many people come here because Paylos Heights, we're not happy with Paylos Heights. They don't even have a bathroom over there, which I would think is illegal. And then they, well, the park comes to us too, because I feel that 143rd Street is dead man's corridor because the way they have to park and cross those double rails. They're afraid to do that, so we are convenient to them, and they are very happy coming here. Then we also have people from Lamont. We have friends from Lamont because they only have three trains in and three trains out. We have 15 in, 15 out. Not that they're reliable, but they come over, and they at least have a chance to get to work in a reasonable time. So, it's positive that way, and it makes us look good. The building is nice. It's perfect the way it's set up. We have two washrooms. They're happy with that. Everybody takes turns. Parents with children come in. I always, if I come there, I say, use the washrooms because we're clean here. There's no pervert knocking on the door. It's not dirty. That's what you would anticipate being down tech in the station. So, that's another point. But my overall concern is the loss of the stickers on those windows because you're losing that money. That's a shame. So, we have to pay $60 a car. That's it. Monies, that's what it is. That's what it's been. We're used to it. That's fine. But really, we need our team to go out, contact all those other residents that are not paying their, their share. And that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thanks, Maria.
Thank you, Mary. Normally, we don't engage in conversation at this point, but I'm just going to, you know, thank you, Mary, for bringing those things up. We did explain in the last meeting the reasoning for repealing the vehicle sticker. And basically, we've seen a trend over the years where people do not buy them. And they are notified when they moved in. They get a letter that explains all the things that they're supposed to do. It comes in the mail to you to fill it out and bring it in. And we've noticed the trend, trending downward, people are not buying them. We do not believe that the police department should spend their time looking at every vehicle in the driveway to see if there's a sticker on it and citing them for it, or, or knocking on the door saying, you need to buy your vehicle sticker. When we decided to do the half percent sales tax, the half percent that we have now generates about $325,000 a year for the village. And that's paid by anybody that shops in Paylos Park, not just the residents. So, by adding the half percent, we gain the $325,000 additional. And to lessen the burden for the residents, we thought taking away the vehicle sticker was a generous thing to do. And it does take a lot of staff time to, to take care of that stuff. And that is not calculated into the cost of the monies that we take in, what we're paying out with staff time. So, hopefully, that just explains a little bit of it. I'm happy to talk to you after to give you any more information, but that way, hopefully, that explains it a little more clearly for others in case they were concerned. Is there anybody else that'd like to address the council? If not, this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still move.
Second.
Hearing a motion, second. Deputy clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Patan.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Mayor Milic Walters.
Yes, and have a great Arbor Day this weekend. Thank you.